...of the standards AMS 21-0001 for a triplex condominium that proposes to exceed the maximum height for zoning district, retaining walls with increased height and a reduction in the required common open space at 25022 Silva Road. But I want to make sure that we include the original discussed conditions of generators, that no generators, no roof decks, and you know, I'd be happy to add a condition of limiting SDRs if they were ever allowed to one on this development. And that would be my motion.
Second.
Are we good on the language for the... Okay, thank you. We can vote, please. So that unanimous yes vote for that to pass. So congratulations and good luck on that project. So I'm going to move on to old business. We have an update on the short-term rental subcommittee.
So nothing significant to report this evening. We are working on the business regulations that will be presented to the Planning Commission at your next meeting on April 12th. So at that meeting, we'll be presenting to you basically the existing regulations and the recommendations of how those regulations will be modified, added to as coming from the subcommittees. That will be your next meeting on April 12th.
Great, thank you very much.
One quick discussion point or item, you know, I know that the group has met multiple times and one of the things that we've discussed is notifications and making sure that given the context of what we're talking about, which is a fairly contentious issue in the city, that we make sure we've noticed everybody and, you know, I think the subcommittee's agreed that noticing the entire community is appropriate. And, you know, I don't know what direction we have to go through here. It's just something that you take to council or, but I think it'd be worth doing. I'd rather see us over-communicate on SDRs than under-communicate, and it seems like a well-spent money.
Yeah, I appreciate the Planning Commission's discussion about that item. It doesn't require City Council's consideration, but what we are envisioning is possibly doing a citywide mail-out probably just prior to the next phase starting, when we start talking about the actual pilot program, what that program looks like, get people to start visiting our website with all the code enforcement information on it, as well as what we're proposing for the business regulations. So if the Planning Commission thinks that's a good idea, then we could certainly take that recommendation forward and find the funding for it and get it done.
Do we need a motion or is it just general consensus?
No, I just think discussion, just nods or shakes head or...
I think it's extremely important that we over-communicate if that's possible and that, I'm assuming that this mail-out would go after we have presented Phase 1, completed Phase 1, so the City Council would have the updated documentation on the proposed enforcement issues.
Right, so the City Council is scheduled to hear the business regulations at their second meeting in April, and this postcard would possibly be going out around that same time. Just nodding too.
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, moving on to new business, so Item 8, the 2020 Annual Housing Element Progress Report.
Yes, good evening. Belinda Dynas is not able to join us tonight, so Carlene Huah, our planning interns, can provide the presentation tonight regarding our annual housing report.
Thank you for the introduction, Director Wiesniewski. Good evening, Chairwoman Opel and fellow commissioners. My name is Carlene Huah, planning intern, and I am pleased to present the 2020 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, commonly referred to as the APR, in compliance with the state regulations for the City of Dana Point's housing unit production reporting. In December of 2013, the City of Dana Point adopted the 2014 to 2021 Housing Element, which is one of the seven required elements of the city's general plan. The city's current housing element was reviewed and approved by the California Department of Housing and Community Development, also called HCD. The city is currently in year eight of an eight-year cycle. The city's adopted housing element provides policies and programs geared towards achieving the city's fifth-cycle goals of the Regional Needs Assessment, also known as RENA. The city's fifth-cycle RENA allocation was determined by the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, and is known, as shown in the green chart above. Housing units are categorized by income categories, as shown in the first column alongside the city's RENA allocation, total units constructed in the year 2020, the city's housing units constructed to date since 2014, and the shortfall for each income category. The city has made progress on moderate-income units, with units for sale at South Cove and promoting construction of accessory dwelling units during the cycle. However, approximately 88% of new units constructed are for above-moderate income. The purpose of this APR is to report on the city's housing unit production within the 2020 calendar year. In 2020, there were a total of 44 new housing units that were issued permits, of which 37 are single-family dwellings, two duplex units, and three mobile homes. In addition to the 44 homes, 10 accessory dwelling units were issued permits. Five housing units were received and approved within the 2020 calendar year, of which one was a single-family dwelling and four were ADUs. There are a total of 25 proposed housing units under review. City staff has been working in preparation for the upcoming sixth-cycle RENA, which will be effective June 30th, 2021, to October 15th, 2029. In December 2018, SCAG began the sixth-cycle RENA process to determine the regional allocation and methodology. HCD determined that the SCAG region will need to accommodate a total of 1.3 million units in this next eight-year period. Based on the approved methodology to distribute the 1.3 million units, the city's allocation is a total of 530 units, and is broken down into four different categories for affordability, as shown in the table. In June 2020, the city entered a contract with Placeworks to serve as our sixth-cycle RENA consultants. The city must obtain certification of the housing element from HCD by October 15th, 2021. In conclusion, following this public hearing, the APR is then required to be sent to HCD and the State Office of Planning and Research by April 1st. City Council will also receive the APR on April 20th, where modifications to the report can be made if needed. This concludes staff's presentation, and staff is prepared to address any questions. Thank you.
Okay, so are there any questions of staff on this item? I do have one question. It shows the allocation was 327, so was that met or was that the goal?
That was the goal. In last planning cycle, Carlene's bringing it up here, 54 units were constructed, so that goal was not achieved.
Okay, thank you. So is just presentation only or...
Yeah, basically it's review, and it will be forwarded on to the City Council. So there is no formal action required.
Okay, thank you. So then, moving on to Item 9, the 2021-2029 Housing Element and Safety Element Update.
So now we're on to discussing our new housing element and our new RENA cycle. So we brought in Colin Drucker. He is with Placeworks, who's helping us develop that housing element. Colin, you're welcome to sit down or stand. He has a presentation he'll be going over. The intent is, we want to provide the Planning Commission a briefing on the housing element and what it's going to be looking like when it comes to you in the near future, as well as to inform you so that when this conversation is happening in the community, you can also share your insight into what the planning element is all about. We are just starting our public process of trying to engage the community, so hoping to get some chatter out there and interest in what this process is. So with that, I'll turn it over to Colin.
Thanks. Hello. It's been a while since I've been in this room. I've done the city's last couple of housing elements, so glad to be back and appreciate the city's trust. I'm just going to give you a real quick tour, some of which is already covered pretty well before we began here. So these are the folks who are going to be involved. I'm Colin Drucker with Placeworks, and we have some other staff who are working on the job, who've done work in and around Dana Point, so we feel like we know the city pretty well, and we want to get something that works for the city. So the basics of the housing element law is that this is the long-term, as opposed to the really nitty-gritty, day-to-day things that you deal with most of the time. This is kind of stepping back. It does not draw the crowds, but it is the kind of long-term plan on where the city's going, what its programs are. It's a required element of the general plan. It is something that has to be updated every eight years. It's the only one that has to be updated on a cyclical basis, and it's the only one that has to be certified by HCD. Now, the safety element's the only other one that kind of pops in, and I'm also going to talk real briefly about that, because we are looking at not just the housing element, but the safety element this go around. So that planning period that was just talked about, this cycle that we're looking at is 21 to 29, and the deadline is October 15th, 2021, and that's our goal. There is, just in case, the public really gets engaged or something else happens, there's a 120-day grace period that every jurisdiction has to work with, but we're hoping not to use that. So the contents of the element really is looking at the basic needs from a housing perspective, looking at whether or not there's any constraints that we can streamline or get rid of to accelerate housing production, looking at the past programs, how's the city's programs doing, are there any things we can improve it, and then what programs should we continue going forward. And then, kind of the biggest, most obvious piece is the land inventory to address that RENA allocation. So I'm just going to, tonight, breeze over a little bit of the city's housing needs and then go over that draft land inventory. So we all know Dana Point is a very desirable place to live. The housing prices reflect it. Unfortunately, wages in general haven't been keeping up with housing prices despite the decline in mortgage rates. Housing's still fairly expensive, not just for ownership, but also for rental units. And we know that there is a lot of affluence in Dana Point, but we also know that there are approximately a quarter of the households earn less than $50,000. And so what this results in is a lot of people overpaying for housing. People want to live here, they're willing to pay more. In some cases, they can stand that; in other cases, they dramatically overpay and they struggle. A lot of the households in Dana Point are fairly small. This is, it's much smaller than the county average, and it reflects the fact that, once people get into Dana Point, generally, they stay here, and it's a good place to stay. And we see a lot of aging in place, so the median age has gone up and up and up over the last 20 years, so now it's about 51 years of age. And so we look at all of the needs like that, to the people living here, and then also looking at special needs, whether it's disabled or homeless. We look at the point-in-time survey. We know that that's just a one-point-in-time, one survey. We try to look at other reports, like what the school district is reporting and what the service providers are offering. So we know it's probably larger than 32. Overall, the numbers we're seeing at Dana Point are extremely high, but we're going to be talking to the police department and others to see what those numbers look like. And the city's already kind of taken its stand on where it needs to go for homelessness in terms of allowing it in the different zones, and then we might be looking at what other steps the city might be taking. So that's the existing housing need. The future housing need is the shiniest object in the housing element, and that is that RENA number. And 530 is a comparatively low number. You may have heard some complaining by fellow other jurisdictions who are looking at dealing with much higher numbers, so the city's pretty fortunate in looking at this relatively tame number. And just looking at what this means in terms of affordable for Dana Point. So if you are a two-person household, then generally, you're able to afford, I kind of show some of the market rate numbers up on the bottom there, and the affordable amounts are on the top of those spectrums there. So as expected, the market generally serves the moderate and above-moderate very well, little bit into the low income if you're on the high end. Ownership is obviously going to be much, much tougher. And then, once you get a little bit, let's say, farther in your career, you have two income earners for sure, and your allowance goes up in terms of your income, but the size of the household you might need goes up. And so the ownership market quickly becomes unattainable, and the rental market is pretty challenging as well. But the city does look at a household size that's hovering around 2.3. So when we're looking at who needs affordable housing, it's not just minimum wage earners or somebody who is employed in a part-time job. There's lots of occupations that we're looking at that have incomes that even when you work, even when you live with someone else who earns that similar income, they're going to be in that lower-income category. And a lot of these are essential jobs or ones that are intrinsic with the nature of Dana Point's economy. So what we looked at was, how do you accommodate the future need? And this is done by anything that's existing as a planned project or something that's in the entitlement process, so we're counting all of those. Obviously, affordable housing doesn't necessarily come out of the woodworks, it's hard to do. So we do look at vacant and underutilized land, and the key thing here is that the city's power is to zone the land so that it is suitable for affordable housing. The city doesn't build affordable housing. Redevelopment law went away a while ago, and the city has very few resources to do affordable housing itself. But what it can do is set the table as best as possible so that affordable housing can be done, and one of that ways is, one of the ways is zoning. So we know that land is expensive, construction costs are going way up, but we know that 30 units an acre for a project is going to be much more feasible for an affordable project than 10 units an acre. So just incrementally, the cost of land gets smaller, the higher the density goes. So the state has these default density laws that says, if you allow 30 units an acre and your assumptions are good, then the city can consider itself to have done its job in terms of setting the table for affordable housing. ADUs, as was mentioned a number of times during the meeting, that is another way, and maybe something that we see an increase with the change in state laws and the fact that you've already paid for the land once when you're doing an ADU, so you're just really paying for the incremental cost of the unit. And then, the really important change in the law that really makes this cycle different than any other cycle before it, is that there was always this gray area about what happens when the city gets its RENA and somebody wants to change their zoning compared to what was in the housing element. And before, you kind of shrugged your shoulders and said, "Well, that's private property owner, they do what they want." Then it kind of changed to, "Well, yes, you can't downzone it, but as long as it's built at the density you said, then you can't really force it to be affordable." Now they've said, "All right, if you show, let's say, there's five sites that can accommodate your lower income, and one of those sites does not develop as lower income, you have to go find more land." It's not the property owner's responsibility, it's the city's responsibility to go find more land. And with a built-out city like Dana Point, that can be very difficult. So we're trying to set the table to give you a little bit of surplus, a little bit of wiggle room, so that as projects come in and they don't develop out exactly as planned, or frankly, we're just setting the table to allow affordable developers to come in. When they don't come in, you still will need to have some headroom. So I'm going to walk through the sites that we've initially identified. These are preliminary assessments of what would be candidate sites to satisfy state law. So one is the Ralph site in the town center area. We know that Ralph's is not renewing its lease, at least that's the communication. So we know that densities are very high in the town center, and so this is a site that, for a good while, looks like a good candidate site, and somebody could come in. Again, they don't have to, and they may not, but as long as this site remains a viable site for new development, then it can count for the lower income. And we are assuming you'll see these kind of capacity assumptions of 50% affordable. That's not us saying 50% will absolutely be affordable on this site. This is us being conservative and assuming, what is the capacity of this site to potentially set the table for affordable housing? So when we add up all of the sites, we know that the city has, has not put all of its eggs into one basket, is basically what we're looking for. So we're trying to have some more conservative assumptions, and that's something that's up for discussion as well. So in the Doheny Village area, obviously, the city's been looking at that zoning there. There are some sites there where we're looking at the fact that the zoning is potentially suitable. One of them is completely vacant and owned by the church, and therefore, that's why you see that 100% affordable option there. Otherwise, we're applying that same assumption. We're looking at densities, 25, 30 units an acre in terms of assuming capacity. And then, the other site that I know you have been dealing with is the Victoria Boulevard area, and we know that there is a 15% component to there, 5% very low and 5% low, and so we're counting those units in there as a pipeline project. So not as a underutilized site, but as a pipeline project. There's a site that's been in the housing element for a couple of cycles. It is a vacant piece of land. It has a lot of potential features that could lend itself towards development, but it is owned by the SEWD, but it is zoned to allow for 30 units an acre, and it remains a viable candidate. There is, once you have a site that is in one or two housing element cycles, then the state says, "Okay, you have to allow affordable housing in terms of, if a project comes in and says, 'We want to do 20% affordable housing,' then that has to be allowed by right." But it's still owned by the SEWD, and so they don't have to develop it if they don't want to, but it is a good candidate site. Then, something that we haven't done in previous housing elements, and some laws have changed, which has created this, and the state has looked favorably on some places of worship that have seen fit to incorporate some affordable housing onto their sites while still operating their religious facilities. So we looked at five churches and looked at just 10% of the site, calculating some capacity. These are parcels that are zoned CF, so they're not really going away anytime soon, and they are a little bit more community-oriented, so they might have the potential that if they work in tandem with an affordable developer, that they might come in and put some units on the site. So this is really kind of a fairly conservative, we're still looking at the sites and making sure that the operations can still continue so that the housing doesn't take over the property. And this just gives you, again, a little bit incremental. We're just trying to pull in capacity from anywhere we can throughout the city. So then, ADUs, you may be already familiar with those, but for, just in case, so there's really three types of ADUs. The first two are the most classic that people are familiar with, that detached unit that sits in someone's backyard. The attached ADU that really is, it's operated as an independent unit, but it is still connected to the structure. And then, there's something called a junior ADU. And a junior ADU is essentially a portion of the house that has exterior access, so it can be lived in like a separate individual unit, but they do share bathroom facilities, not the kitchen. I would want it the other way around if it were me, but that is what, for the junior ADU, it's something that is allowed by right now. The law has changed, and it really, the city has to allow a large range of ADU structures in the city, but somebody has to come in and propose it, but we know that, I believe, 10 permits were issued in last year, and we're presuming a relatively moderate increase just in terms of overall capacity. Again, doesn't have to be built, but the benefit of ADUs is that they are generally renting at costs that are very, very affordable, again, because you've paid for that land and the owners are usually not looking, are not able to get the same amount, because these units are smaller as well. So this is kind of the end summary of the city's potential, based on that preliminary land inventory. When you're looking at the lower-income RENA of 231, that's the very low and low combined, which HCD allows you to do, we're looking at having this capacity of 344 on vacant, underutilized land, and 40 units projected for capacity for ADUs. So you get this 153-unit surplus, where, again, if the Ralph site comes in and develops, you aren't immediately having to go rezone property. That's what the flexibility we want to build in. And then, for moderate income, there's a, really, obviously, the bulk of the market goes towards the above-moderate income, but there are some that, if they're not developed at lower incomes with the higher densities, they might reach that lower price point. And so we're showing surpluses in all of these categories to make sure that the city accommodates its RENA allocation. And it is a, it is a projected goal, and the one thing that is different from this cycle than all of the other years is, the other years was always just based on future projected needs, so just growth. And right now, they're trying to kind of make up for the pent-up demand, and there's some existing need that really dominates. That's why you're seeing the really, really high numbers everywhere. So the other law that you might be hearing about is AB 686. It is really kind of just blossoming now in housing elements. Some have been trying to tackle it, but they've been kind of arm-wrestling with the state, and we are waiting for the state to come out with their guidance. We're actually working with them a little bit, so we've, I think we've cleared the last hurdle, so they should be coming out with some guidance on how fair housing issues manifest themselves in Dana Point. And then, the really key thing is, how does the land inventory relate to where there's maybe concentrations of lower income or ethnicity in the cities? That's what AB 686 is really getting at. So we'll be coming back to you with that information, but this, it is a thorny potential issue that we want to make sure we get clear guidance on. So that's the nickel tour of the housing element, and here's the penny tour of the safety element, because we have really just a technical update. So the safety element, as I mentioned, it's a required element, really looking at some of the many obvious protections against natural and man-made hazards. We try and aggregate the information in existing plans and pending plans, and it's really just a technical update where, because we're updating the housing element, the law triggers the need to look at the safety element. So we're looking at increased flood hazards and risks associated with that, as well as, actually, yes, wildfire. There is a portion of the city that's in the fire hazard severity areas and other areas are ember zones, so just some really kind of minor technical updates we have to do to minimize the risk and make sure the policy is in place. Probably the biggest component is a vulnerability assessment, so there was one done for sea-level rise, this is one that's broader, deals with kind of increasing changes in weather and climate, and what is the risk to the people and what are the risks to the facilities in the city? So that's something that we're preparing that informs the policy development of the safety element. These are your current topics, you know, fairly self-explanatory for most of the way people live and understand the risks inherent in living in a coastal community. And then, these are some potential topics that we are considering adding, mostly dealing with severe weather issues and then their after-effects. So the overall project schedule, yes, we did get started in June 2020. There's a small pandemic going on, which caused some delay on a number of things, and then, we're really, a lot of these laws passed in 2017, but the state guidance hasn't really come out with some of them even yet. Most of them have been finally cleared up, but we're still getting through HCD's kind of determination on what some of these new laws mean. So we are starting that outreach process right now. We're planning on coming out with draft portions of the element for the public to review, give us comment on, tell us if we missed anything, and then kind of revise it and come back out with a revised draft element, go to HCD, get their review. They are trying to expedite their review process, shorten the timeline so they can tell us if we need to button anything up, and then come back in the fall for adoption hearings. So these are the stakeholders we've spoken with so far. We first, you know, instead of going just straight to the public, we usually talk with some of the service providers. You'll see a number of these up here, look at homelessness, look at fair housing, look at affordable housing, so we try and get their take on what the city can do. We know in general what they're going to say, but we want to get something specific, and oftentimes, they will provide some really good insights that we can make improvements on the programs or make a better assessment of the needs. So the general schedule for the outreach, obviously, we're here tonight. We're launching a quick survey soon, just to get a sense of what people's priorities are. All of these issues are important to somebody, but we want to know from the public and from people like you, what are the city's priorities for, is it for young families, or is it for people who are earning extremely low incomes, or is it homelessness? We want to know what are the biggest priorities so the city can assess and contribute its finite resources towards those problems. So then, we're meeting with the youth board beginning of April, and then giving the council an update on where things stand later in the month, and then we're going to have a broader virtual public workshop so people can attend, look at the draft element, ask questions, and make sure that we don't miss anything. So this is mostly here, not for you folks, but for the general public when they see this, so they know where to find more information. And with that, I'll turn it back over to the city and be available for questions.
Are there any commissioner questions, comments?
Just one, on Slide 11, you put spending on rent. It's also housing, correct? I mean, people that own, it just said renters, and I'm just, as I looked at that, I thought it's...
Yeah, let me, I'm pretty sure the answer is yes, but let me double-check. Was it the one with the blue line, or was it the one with the...
No, it had barcodes on the bottom.
That one? Or...
Overpayment, more than 30% of income spent on rent, on housing.
Yes, this one, yes.
It just says, "Spent on rent," and it's actually slash housing.
It's the cost, the rental cost of housing is what is intended there.
You're saying that 30% of owners are not spending more than 50%, or 30%?
No, so what this is intended to communicate is that, for ownership households in the city, 37% spend more than 30% of their income on that housing rent, I mean, on the housing cost. Yes, I see what you're saying now.
Thank you.
It just took you asking me four times. Yes, the bottom chart is not intended to deal with the ownership. It's mostly to focus on the rental. Yes, I, thank you.
It's mostly to focus on the rental, yes. Thank you.
A quick question on staff writing of the safety plan. I assume it's going to go through the sheriff and OCFA and all of the stakeholders.
It is reviewed by OCFA.
And the sheriff's office as well?
If it affects any of the sheriff's department's items, we haven't seen the draft of it yet, but most is OCFA. Colin, do you foresee us needing the sheriff's department?
Not particularly. I mean, it doesn't hurt to run by them, but general technical updates we're doing, whether or not...
Well, I was going to say, if we're doing something that impacts the emergency center, emergency response center, that the sheriff's department would be involved as well. And just all of the other groups. And are we going to be the body that says it's okay? Or is there another group that's going to look at this and say, give it the thumbs up prior to going to city council?
So the planning commission is the recommending body to the city council.
For the safety element.
Mm-hmm, for the safety element as well, correct.
Thank you.
Just one other question, Dylan. The, or Colin, excuse me. The issue with the sites, we're just saying that's a potential, but Ralph's owner could say, sorry, I've got somebody else coming in and we don't have any control over that.
Right, so if this were last cycle, then you could more easily just kind of say, well, all right, we're going to, if we zone it, if we say it's got the capacity for 40 units an acre and a property owner sells it to someone and they develop it for 40 units an acre, you can say our job is done here. Now, the law has changed so that if that site, we say 50% suitable or capacity for affordable housing, when somebody comes in and they develop it and there's no affordable housing on, let's just say for argument's sake, then if you need that capacity to accommodate your arena, then you have to go zone more land. So that's why we're trying to give you that headroom so that if a project does come in, basically, if three or four of these project sites develop, you're probably going to have to rezone housing unless they include some sort of affordable housing. But we're trying to give you enough, as much wiggle room as we can.
How you doing, sir? I've got a bunch of questions for you, so I apologize in advance for probably spending too much time on this. But I find this whole exercise fascinating. I think I heard someone describe it as a Soviet era, Cold War era planning exercise where, you know, the mothership calls, you know, home and says, this is what you need to do and you do it and you don't question it. And if you do question it, you get in big trouble. So the exercise itself, if I'm hearing you correctly and my understanding is, it's really a planning exercise, it's not a building exercise. And we have, you know, planning going on, but doesn't mean anybody's going to want to build it. It just would let them build it if they wanted to, right?
That is correct.
Okay. So one issue that still drives me nuts and it's, came up a couple of years ago, so it was before your time, Brandon. You may recall the Silver Lantern property. It is a, it got some public funding, but it's a private entity that's running. And it's a transition, or it's actually a full-time, it's not a homeless shelter, but it's in between a homeless shelter and a transition house. So it's permanent supportive housing, run through Mercy, and the state wouldn't let us count it because it wasn't deed restricted. Yet, it's there, there's a lease through a private entity. And so, you know, the issue I have is that we actually have affordable housing on a street, one street over from my house, it runs impeccably. It's the poster child for what they could be like. And as a city, we don't get to count it in our allocation of affordable housing, unfortunately. So that's a bone to pick, not with you, but just with the process, is that even when we do the best that we can do, we don't get any credit for that, which is just fascinating. But I do want to have a couple of questions. So you said that as part of this process, you're counting unentitled land that's in the pipeline process? So I guess the question is, what if we count it and then it doesn't come through? Because then you end up with, you know, or vice versa, if it comes in here and it gets denied, but it's included on our housing element, but we haven't changed the general plan yet. What happens then?
The only project that's of any concern for that, because most of the projects coming in are market rates, so they don't, you know, you don't have any trouble meeting your above moderate income arena, is the Victoria Boulevard area.
Is that the school, the school site?
Yes, yeah, the former school bus yard. So that's got 10% of the units for very low and low and another 5% for moderate. It's small enough that if that project doesn't come in, it is not going to give you a deficit on your capacity. If we go through the zoning and stay with the zoning and the assumptions that is in the, on the vacant and underutilized lands that we identified and the ADUs, then the city will have enough capacity to meet its arena allocation. So if that project doesn't come in, let's say, it just puts more pressure on your sites that you have remaining.
Okay, but still, we have no authority or ability to force affordability on developers?
No, you have not adopted an inclusionary ordinance. And so that would be the only way that you could do that. Some, I mean, people can do that in specific plans. That has been something that, specific plans are kind of the, all rules are up in the air. You can, you know, negotiate. But otherwise, inclusionary ordinance are the primary ways cities do.
So when looking at the density, just so I understand the calculations, do you assume in those densities that there's, so they come in at a lower density and the assumption is the affordable is included, so then they can do a bonus? And they're taking advantage of the density bonus to get to the higher density? Or is that the density and anything, and that could actually go up if the affordability increases?
Well, so the density is, the density serves for a couple of purposes. One, the state says, look, we're tired of all the jurisdictions. Somebody, some legislature said, we're tired of all the jurisdictions saying, well, what's an affordable density? How do we prove affordability? One way you prove affordability is you have an affordable housing project. And you say, look, it got built at 25 units an acre, therefore, we know it works. We know it all, it's going to be subsidized. It doesn't work at a market rate function. But if you can show that evidence, then you can justify it. Otherwise, they say, hey, here's a safety net, 30 units an acre. As long as you allow that without the density bonus, then you can say that your zoning can potentially accommodate affordable housing. Then there's the density that we assume for capacity. That is different. That is the, usually, we try, like, to use a lower number than the maximum so that it's a little bit more conservative, unless it's an extreme case. That is the number that we're using to figure out how many units and how many sites the city needs to accommodate its arena. So there's really kind of two purposes. Density bonus, the state has for years said, you can't count density bonus in your potential calculation. Some jurisdictions are looking at allowing affordable housing to go a little bit more, so it's kind of a two-step density bonus where there is a local density bonus that's in there. But so I...
Yeah, I think you answered my question, but I created another one. So I'm clear, let's say you had an acre site, had 40 DU to the acre zoning or general plan zoning. And they came in and went 100% low and, you know, doubled the, it could theoretically, I don't know the exact number, but they just say the density bonus law, they could double the density.
Yeah.
We can then count the density.
You can get, what really matters, once you get past the, once you get past one milestone of getting a certified housing element, then it's all about the units. The density only matters if you're approving projects at below the density. But even then, you know, let's say you take that acre project, it's 40 units an acre, and you come in with 30 affordable units. Frankly, you're ahead of the game because you probably only counted 20 on it to begin with. And even then, you weren't really believing that it was going to come in that high anyway. So if somebody comes in with 30, it's lower density, but the chances are you've actually benefited from that from a capacity standpoint, so you probably don't have to rezone. So if somebody comes in, you're right, with density bonus law, let's say they're 100% affordable and it's within a half mile of a transit stop, there's no density max. You know, they can kind of, sky's the limit to a certain little bit degree. They could put 100 units on that potentially. And that's 100 units you get to count towards your arena allocation.
Okay, so density or affordability by design is only for the planning element portion that you don't, if it's built at 30 to the acre, you don't get to count it as low income?
Right, yeah, that was last cycle.
Whatever, whatever, not what it builds up, but the actual value placed on it.
All that matters is what actually gets built when you get past October.
Couple other quick questions. So on the town center, you know, is that an allowed, is that 50 to the acre allowed in our town center?
Yes, it is.
Wow.
Actually, the town center does not have a density limit.
Oh, okay. That'll be a fun one. I did one quick question where that public property was. You showed it on the map, but there was no location. I have no idea where that's at, I'm just curious.
So here's a map that will help you. It's the farthest northeast blue circle.
Okay, farthest northeast, so...
Or east, farthest east, I'll just say.
Okay, Capo.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
So it's up kind of the top.
I think, I think that was it. Two other quick comments for you. One is on your slide of who you've reached out to. What I didn't see is the building industry or the apartment owners. I think, you know, talking to the other developers other than the affordable is important. And then, you know, what are your thoughts relative to some of the new legislation that's coming down like SB 9 and how that's going to affect this whole process? If all the single-family zoning is now, you know, effectively duplex zoning?
I mean, that's in many ways the ADU legislation.
There's even more coming.
Right, oh yes, but the ADU already turned it so that you could essentially have three units per lot. Because you have a junior ADU, an ADU that's detached or attached and a primary unit. And they do not have to be owner occupied. Well, if it's got a junior ADU, you have to have an owner occupied. But otherwise, you can have, so it's, I mean, it is, I think people are trying to figure out whatever solution they can, they're just trying to cram more units on there because they know the biggest obstacle is if you can't say thou shalt do affordable housing, then it's really all about trying to provide the incentives for somebody to create more housing. And there's some thought, which is if you create a bigger flow of market rate use, market rate housing, then you will get, I think what's reasonable is you will get probably lower price escalation on existing units. I don't think it will decrease the cost of new housing. So I think people are, you know, grasping at straws to try and push as much in there as they can. I think it's going to be an issue a lot of people struggle with.
Yeah, okay. And then one other thing in the, in our housing, do we have any section in there for resources for developers? Like, there's two different housing trusts in Orange County that they could go to get money. I think we should make sure we include.
Yeah, so it's, and I kind of didn't put the word resources up there, but when we look at constraints, we also look at resources that's in there.
Thank you very much.
So I just have a couple to add. Last month, I did attend a forum that Eric was a panelist on, the South Orange County Economic Coalition on Housing. And they were talking about, like, I think that he was referring to the pending legislation of wanting 500, what was it, 3.5 million new units by 2025? And so for our area, the South Orange County, the 33 cities, was 183,000 units in eight years, which is outrageous. And what they're saying is right now, they're doing about 10,000 a year, so it'd be 23,000 a year, a little bit crazy. So concerned about that. And then also, what is our impact? Because our last cycle, we achieved like 20% of our goal. So our goal's getting higher. And, you know, we're not going to, I don't think, achieve anything greater unless we do have one of these large developments. So what is, you know, what are our penalties for not achieving our goals?
There's really, as long as you have enough land zoned, you're basically complying with the housing element law. The only, I guess you could use the word penalty. Most jurisdictions will view it as a penalty, is that SB 35 legislation that came in and said, and I'll put this in the rosiest way that it can be put, which is the state has removed the red tape for you if you are not seeing your annual housing production for either your lower income or your above moderate income coming to light. And so if you are not, you know, you've said it, your goals are now higher, so you're even less likely to be kind of proportionally achieving those goals on an annual basis. And so SB 35 will kick in for, I would say, 95% of jurisdictions in California over the next five or six years. And, but the penalties are not that extreme. Basically, what it says is that there's two tiers. And if you're not producing, probably messed this up, but there's a 10% tier and a 50% tier. And what that, those 10 and 50%, that's the amount of affordability. If a project comes to you with either 10% affordability or 50% affordability, then you have almost no ability to say no to the project. There's still some health and safety allowances, but by and large, they're not allowing you to have a CUP on it. And so if you have somebody who comes to you with an affordable project and it meets all of your standards, you just can't really say no, which is not, I mean, there is a certain absolute loss of local control. But in terms of penalties, that's about it. As long as you stay in compliance with housing law. If you don't stay in compliance, then, and you start saying no to projects, that's when the financial penalties start coming into play. So if you are essentially kind of a bad actor and saying, well, here's an affordable project, we're not in compliance with the housing element, we're going to say no to it, then they start fining you. And you'll probably get sued before that, so.
How hefty are those fines?
Oh, I can't remember. I could cite a number. It's not insignificant. I mean, they're, it's not like a million dollars a day, but, you know, it's something where it's enough to kind of get your attention. So you're probably, it's mostly, the biggest issue is that you would get sued and your general plan would be considered to be kind of on hold and you might not be able to approve anything. That's the most extreme case and very few, even Huntington Beach didn't get, you know, that, we all saw how that played out and was basically, everyone agreed that, okay, we'll keep trying. And then Huntington Beach got certified, so.
All right, and then another thing on your stakeholders. You talked about reaching out to Capo Unified. I would also recommend reaching out to Saddleback College because we're within that service area and they've done board presentations with respect to the quantity of homeless students that they have at the college level.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I had, thank you. All right, so moving on, staff reports.
Nothing tonight, thank you, but welcome, Commissioner Gabbard, and looking forward to the next meeting, thank you.
Commissioner comments?
Comrade, you haven't met your quota, so we have a new quota.
Denny, any comments?
It's all fair and equal, it's really what we're doing tonight, so it's good.
Vice Chair?
Yeah, just welcome aboard again. Really excited to have a new commissioner and some new blood on here to work with, so looking forward to that. And thank you for your service. That seat is not always an easy seat to take and I appreciate your time here and working closely with you.
Looking forward to relaxing a little bit.
It's very nice because I've been there before and I know what it feels like to not have to do that. So thank you so much for being the leader for us.
Thank you. Commissioner Gabbard, any comments this evening?
Yeah, I want to thank you for your service on the commission for the past year. Like I said, I've watched all the meetings. I think you did a fantastic job and you've been a true servant to the community, so I appreciate that. I am excited to be a member of the commission. I have to say that the entire team, between community development and the commission, work extremely well together. And I've been completely impressed with everyone and the professionalism and the level of knowledge. It's just been, it's just been great and I look forward to working with everyone over the next few years.
And I have a few, so I look forward to the next four years too, so I'm happy to still be here. I do want to have a recommendation though. Because I work in the educational forum, there's so much on diversity, inclusivity. And looking through the reservations tonight, some said chairwoman, some said chair. Is it possible to have just chair or chairperson? That way, there's never a question and anyone can identify however they wish.
Absolutely, good idea.
Thank you. All right, that's all I have tonight, so I will adjourn it until our meeting on April 12th. Thank you.